I'd like to call the meeting for March 27 at roughly about 5:32 to order. Will the Secretary please call roll?
Commissioner Becerra.
Here.
Commissioner Contreras Leo. Commissioner Alderetti. Vice Chair McLaughlin.
Here.
Chair Marino.
Here.
Commissioner Mendoza.
Here.
Commissioner Nguyen. Chair, for the record, Commissioner Alderetti will not be in attendance in today's meeting. You have quorum.
Thank you. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. When you begin, I pledge allegiance to God, and the United States of America, and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice This is the time for public comments. Does a member of the public have any public comments on non-agenda items? That would be anything that's not agendized today for today's meeting. If you do, you may fill out a request to speak form with the Secretary, and after introduction, have three minutes to speak unless an extension of time is granted by the chairperson. Seeing none, then we will move on to the consent calendar. Do we have a motion to approve items on the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're going to move on to the business calendar, and this is the time where we have Commissioner Communication disclosures. Do any Commissioners have anything they wish to disclose with regard to items on tonight's I do have a disclosure. I had a conversation with the applicant, Representative Joseph Rodriguez, on February 28th. So I have my form completed. Thank you. And then we will move on to public hearings, and this is the time and place for the public hearing on item number one, which is for conditional use permit number 2016-26. If you wish to address the Planning Commission, please file a request to speak form with the Secretary. Comments are limited to three minutes unless an extension of time is granted by the chairperson. The action of the Planning Commission is final following consent of the City Council unless, if allowed by the San Antonio Municipal Code, an appeal to the City Council is filed with the clerk of the council and a copy is sent to the Planning Department within 10 days from the date of the Commission's action or unless set for public hearing by the City Council. Staff will now make a presentation on this item.
Good evening, Madam Chair, and members of the Commission. Before you, we have, before you is item, before you this evening is item Conditional Use Permit 2016-26 for ATC Sequoia LLC Monopane Renewal at 2961 West MacArthur Boulevard. The application is to renew an existing 55-foot monopane on an industrial site. In addition to the renewal, the installation of 24 new additional branches to the monopane is requested, and the application requires issuance of a new conditional use permit. Here's a sight foot of the, here's an aerial of the existing site. The site is located in the light industrial zone, M1, and is surrounded by industrial and commercial land uses. The aerial points where the location of the existing wireless facility is located, it is located on the north, sorry, northwest of the property. Here is also a site plan, also locating the wireless facility, again, on the northwest of the property. This is an existing, this is a sight foot of the existing wireless facility as of today. And here is a photo simulation requested by staff to the applicant. On the left hand, on, sorry, on my left-hand side is the existing facility, the wireless facility, and on the right-hand side is a proposed with the 24 additional branches installed. The project requires a new conditional use permit to extend the life of the existing wireless facility for an additional 10 years. The existing, the existing wireless facility meets all the San Antonio Municipal Code standards. In addition, the wireless facility, where staff is requesting that they refresh, refresh the site by replacing, replacing the ground cover and adding the 24 new branches as well to enhance the stealthing of the tower. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit, Conditional Use Permit number 2016-26 as conditioned. That concludes my presentation. There's also a representative of ATC Sequoia LLC here, if you'd like, for any additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Staff? Do you have a card for Representative Mr. Dave Burton? Can he come up and speak on the project?
Hello, my name is Dave Burton. Thanks for having me here tonight. Thank you, Scarlett. This was the second time you guys have seen the project. So since this last time, we went back to our engineering department, tried to figure out what the maximum number of branches we could add was without affecting the load that we could put in on there for another co-locator, for another carrier on the tower. And I think we came back with something pretty nice, adding 24 new branches. Hopefully, you guys like that. So unless you guys have any questions for me.
Any questions? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Seeing that that's the most speaker, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the office. Commissioner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank staff for working with the applicant to make this more of a stealth facility than what was presented to us in November. And with that, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving Conditional Use Permit number 2016-26 as conditioned.
I'm second.
Okay, have a motion. Sarah in the second from Commissioner Nguyen.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moving on to item number two, which is the amendment application number 2016-05, Conditional Use Permit numbers 2016-44 and 2017-06. Staff will make a presentation?
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. Before you this evening is several applications, the first of which is an amendment application number 2016-5, a Conditional Use Permit application number 2016-44, and Conditional Use Permit number 2017-06. And this is for a Chevron station, service station that is being proposed at 2603 South Main Street. Little bit of the project, it's to develop a service station, as I mentioned, a restaurant with a drive-through service, which is one of the Conditional Use Permit applications, and a car wash facility, which is the additional CUP application, on a 1.37-acre site. The application requires approval of the amendment application for the zone change and is currently from C2 general commercial to a M1 light industrial zone. In addition, the application requires approval of the two Conditional Use Permits for the drive-through facility and the car wash facility as well. This is an aerial view of the site. As you can see, it's currently vacant with surrounding industrial and commercial land uses and the railroad track to the north there. This is a site plan of the proposed development. To the left, you'll see the canopy where the fueling stations will be. To the right is the building structure where you'll have the restaurant and the convenience store for the service station, and then the drive-through for the restaurant wraps around the east of the building there. And then parking just to the south of that, and then the car wash facility just to the south with the drive-through entrance, well, the drive aisle entrance for that as well. This is just a closer look at the floor plan of the restaurant, just to give you an idea, and the convenience store. And the convenience store will be located to the north of the building, I mean, to the south, I'm sorry. And then the restaurant will be located to the north. A tenant hasn't been established yet, but the proposal of the development is to open up the opportunity for any restaurant use out there. Now, these elevations are still, the names, I mean, are still preliminary. We don't know if a Burrito King will actually go in place, but, just to give you an idea. And the bottom image is just to give you a perspective of what the elevations and the articulation of the building will be like. So to the left of the Burrito King is the exit of the drive-through facility there. This is the elevation for the proposed car wash. Now, the first image doesn't justify how much actually is going on with the building, but it, it does have a little bit of articulation and all that. This is just for reference, just to give you an idea. And the canopy for the proposed Chevron service station with the fueling stations. As I mentioned, the site is vacant, and it has been so since 1991. It was previously a laundry and a dry-clean business, and it's been vacant for a number of years now. The project will provide an added service to the workers and the residents in the area, being that it is commercial and industrial. Changing the zone will actually create consistency with the general plan that is currently out there for industrial. And Delhi neighborhood has been contacted, and I've received, I believe you might have had the email as well, from several of the residents in the Delhi neighborhood, and they're all in favor for it. They, they think it's a positive change and hopefully create a great change to what they currently face with the vacant property out there. And the site design and the building placement for all the uses has been designed to better circulate the vehicles onsite and both offsite for access. Conditions have been added to ensure that the operations of the service station and the car wash not create a nuisance to the area. And with that, staff recommends that the City Council approve Amendment Application number 2016-05, approve Conditional Use Permit number 2016-44 as conditioned, and approve Conditional Use Permit number 2017-06 as conditioned. That concludes my presentation. There is also, my applicant is also present to answer any technical questions that you might have. Thank you.
Any questions, Staff? Commissioners, Sarah?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only question I have right now is, on the, on the conditions of approval, number five, you have that the hours of operation of the car wash facility will be scheduled from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Yes.
And I was just curious as to what led to those limits. And the reason I ask that is because the car wash facility, well, first of all, the site overall is surrounded by primarily industrial and then, I think, a couple of C2 properties. And I think the closest residential is about, let's call it, 500 to 600 feet away. You've got a storage facility, train, and significant buffer. So I guess, given some of the other car wash proposals that we've seen come before the Commission that are right up against residential, it makes sense to really think about operating hours. But in this particular case here, was there a reason for it? I just wasn't aware, but I was curious.
Not necessarily a specific reason. Most car wash facilities operate within those hours. We're trying to keep consistent with the rest of the city. I understand that this is a unique location where residential is not really an issue, but we still want to keep those operations limited to, so that, you know, the service station is operable 24 hours a day and, you know, that it creates almost like a different schedule for the site. But, you know, it wasn't something that we landed on concrete. We're just following some of the consistent hours for the rest of the car washes.
Okay, so just based on what we've done with other ones? Nothing specific to the site at the moment?
No, and those are just conditions as well. I mean, if there was any recommendation or something of the sort to, to modify them, you know, those are the conditions.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Staff?
I just have one question. I, Commissioner Madam Chair, I still consider myself somewhat new, but what is the F.A.R.?
F.A.R.
Yeah, what, I mean, what is?
Floor area ratio. It's usually the building square footage in comparison to the lot size.
Oh, okay.
I hope I'm referring.
I understand that. And then, one other thing is, it says, for the signs?
Yes.
Is that going to consist of a new application or?
No, usually for any building construction, even a brand-new building or when a tenant comes in, the signs is always a second, you know, ministerial approval, so it's not subject to today's decision.
Thank you.
Hi, and I just had one question. I saw in there the, there's not an issue with stacking. It meets all the requirements for stacking.
Yes.
For the drive-through. And I also noticed three driveways. I think the plan's pretty well laid out, but if there was to be stacking, how are, is it imagined that that's going to happen? Is that going to come in adjacent to the fueling canopy, or are they expecting that's going to wrap around in front of the parking stalls? Is, I mean, is there some way to control that, or is this, I mean, people are going to come in from both directions? So is that up to them to manage that?
Well, I think at the end of the day, when something is proposed, we really can't consider everyone's decision as, you know, drivers. So the intent, I think, is having the multiple driveway accesses, so exits are an option for many people. So if there is an issue where, you know, for a few minutes, there is some traffic congestion because of the stacking, maybe it's during the a.m. morning and they sell coffee, or that the alternate driveway accesses act as a way to get out of the site.
What would you estimate the number of cars that will fit in the actual drive-through pathway? Because that looks like it might be pretty big.
Well, with the site, I just posted the site.
Oh, there's cars right there.
Yeah, it's just an estimate. That's proposed.
Six.
It's a pretty large number.
Okay. Okay. It looks good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. If anybody would like to speak on this item, please come up and fill out a form. I do not have any speaker cards, so unless someone steps up, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Bring it back to the Commission. Any comments or a motion? Commissioner Becerra? Sir, did you want to fill out a card? Speak on this item?
Hi, I'm Richard Garcia from San Antonio More Productive Association, and we gladly accept this proposal. We definitely need a new change and down south San Ana, and especially down Main Street. So we definitely met with my board, and they agreed definitely to approve supposedly, I hope we can approve this proposal. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sarah, do you need to fill it? You got it? Okay. Okay, we're back to the dais and a motion or any comments? Commissioner Mendoza?
I want to move to conditional use permit number 2016-44 and 2017-6.
I'll second for discussion.
You can get a motion, a second. Commissioner Becerra?
Yeah, I just have two, two thoughts. One is, there's a lot of blank walls on this facility, and to me, it just, it would be a magnet for graffiti. And I'm just wondering if staff has considered working with the applicant to try to put some landscaping or some ivy along there, just to minimize the calls for service for graffiti out there. I mean, it's a beautiful facility, so I'm not questioning the architecture at all. It's just more of the pragmatic, and I would say this, no matter what part of the city this facility was located in, as I have many times. But is that, is that part of the conditions? Is there some way we can work that into the proposal?
You know, the part of the requirement of the development project is to submit preliminary landscape, and so the applicant has provided that, and those comments from, from you are part of that review as well, to make sure that those blank walls are covered with something that would deter graffiti. So it is something that we look at. Landscaping is obviously something that we do after tonight, but definitely one of those things that staff has in mind to comment based on the preliminary landscape plan.
Yeah, because the western elevation, I mean, you've got plenty of glass, I mean, short of somebody just not paying attention and someone etching, I think for the most part, the concerns would be the other sides where, again, just looking at the elevations, they're great, but they are pretty blank.
Right. And, and, you know, to your comment, I think because they aren't facing Main Street, they are, you know, in a way, secondary elevations, that could be subject to graffiti. But those are the things that we look at when the landscape plan is submitted, and that would be noted.
Okay. And one thing I just want to throw out for my colleagues, something to think about. So right now with this site, according to our staff report, the restaurant can operate 24 hours a day, which is fantastic. I think we could use more 24-hour facilities in the city. But one thing that this facility has, which we're looking at today, is a drive-through. So if you're a pedestrian in that area, and there are folks in that area that don't own automobiles, after, after the dining room would close for whatever restaurant comes in, then pedestrians would not be able to get service, per se. And they're not going to walk through the drive-through. In fact, I think it's very discouraged. So with that being said, I would like to potentially add a condition where we would ask that the restaurant in the future, not necessarily open the dining room, but just allow for takeout service during the hours that only the drive-throughs open.
But if, you're saying that the drive-through is open 24 hours, so you want?
I'm talking about a person that lives in the area. Just like, for instance, if you, if you go down south Main, there's a lot of food trucks in that area, which is great, because they're active at night, and I see a lot of people walking to them and standing in line. And so kind of in the spirit of what you see transpiring there, you would think that a facility like this would also want to cater to the pedestrians in that area.
So could we legally do that, impose that kind of addition to the conditions?
I, I think it's very possible. I think it's something that we would just ask that, again, not necessarily asking that the whole facility be open, that just, you know, because before us today is the use, and I assume that as they go through building process, they'll have to tweak the, the building itself, but if there's a way, either they do a takeout window, or maybe they coordinate off to where you would only go in to where the, you know, where you would order your food was open, but not the rest of the facility. Something that would just allow people in the neighborhood not to feel that up after 10 o'clock. If they don't have a car, they're not going to be able to go to this facility.
You, you may want to ask the applicant if they're willing to, if they would be able to do that as part of their operations.
Hang on, Commissioner. Are you representing the applicant?
Yes. Good evening, Commissioners. To answer your question, the tenant hasn't been secured yet, so it might very well be a tenant where the hours of operation might be from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Correct.
So there wouldn't be any, where the drive-through would close at the same time as the, as the indoor facility.
Which would be optimal. And so I think if we attach a condition, it would be something to where if you were to secure a tenant that were to want to operate past 5:00 or 10:00, they would just somehow work it out on their floor plan to allow for people to access ordering, you know, if they wanted to walk up, in addition to being able to drive through.
Lisa, do you have a concern?
Yes, the CUP is for the drive-through service. So you're trying to condition it to have a separate window, or make the restaurant?
I'm going to leave that up to whoever comes in and whenever they submit their TIs, and the conditions would be something that staff could enforce, but I'm just asking that part of the operation include an ability for folks to walk in and order food, for takeout, not necessarily, excuse me, not necessarily to consume the food on-site, but just the same way you would with the drive-through. The intent would be to come in, order the food, pick it up, and then leave on your way and consume it somewhere else. That would be the same thought process here, is to say, if you're going to have it operating, a drive-through operating, you should allow for pedestrian access as well.
I don't want to see how that's related to the drive-through.
It's a condition that I'm asking to be put on the project. That's all I'm asking.
Well, I mean, I, I'm sorry.
Stay up there, because I think we might.
Commissioner Nguyen, do you have a question?
Yes, I don't, I don't think it's fair to require the applicant or the developer to do certain thing that, because that's a business decision. We should allow that to the operator, the developer, to make that decision, because that's totally a business decision. It's not have walk-through, you know, the, for food services as well, drive-through, but again, again, that's totally a business decision. We should, I don't think the city would, any position require the business do certain type of, how they conduct the business. And also, the, as the applicant have indicated, the, if they don't have a tenant yet, and then when, whenever that they have a tenant, and that tenant will apply, do the modification CUP, whatever, how they, how they would like to conduct the business.
Commissioner Nguyen, I don't believe that the applicant would need to modify the CUP when they secure a tenant for the site unless, for some reason, they change the drive-through or some other operational feature that falls under the Conditional Use Permit. And also, too, I completely agree with you, Commissioner Nguyen, that we don't want to start throwing a bunch of conditions onto the businesses, and, you know, businesses are the ones that know how to operate. I'm saying this out of fairness to the adjacent Delhi neighborhood and other neighborhoods, where a lot of folks in the city, as I'm sure you're aware, don't own automobiles. And if you are down in the South Main area, which I'm not too far from that area, I do see a lot of people out at night, and they're not driving to the places that are open. So this was just something out of consideration for them, not necessarily an attempt to throw something onto a business that's onerous and unnecessary. It was just more of looking out for the folks that are around that site and trying to see what we can do to, again, make it more of a welcoming facility.
No, Chair. Commissioner Contreras, then?
I agree with you, Commissioner Nguyen, but I think, for me, the flag goes up in regards to safety concerns, and I think that's why a lot of time restaurants even like Taco Bell, Jack in the Box have drive-throughs, but they close down the inside because the employees inside become much more vulnerable. And unfortunately, it is the times we're in, and I just see that as a huge safety factor, and I couldn't support that.
Okay.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
Well, I, since you haven't chosen or don't have, it could be a national company that could come in and do setup in this facility, correct?
Well, yes, and they're looking at a number of possibilities, and some of them would only be open in the early morning through lunchtime.
Right. But I mean, you could put a Jack in the Box or something like that, could be, be in there, just like, just like a independent restaurant, too. So, I mean, I think that, again, I think the condition is noteworthy, but I think to put it on you at this point in time, when you don't have a tenant, it's, it will probably limit your ability to get tenants because more will get out.
That's correct.
I agree.
If I may say, I just, I appreciate what the concerns of my colleagues here, I just, I think we shouldn't be afraid of our own community, and I think, yes, we are in some tough times, but at the end of the day, there are folks that are not bad people, that do not own automobiles, and I think that when you have a facility that caters to those that own an automobile, it really kind of skews toward one economic strata versus another. And especially where you have a city where statistically, 1 in 10 people use transit exclusively. That means folks here predominantly significantly do not have automobiles, and it's just a thought to try to accommodate folks that would potentially use this facility.
So I think that the message that maybe you could take back with, would be that it would be, it may be in your, and the tenant's best interest is to stay open as late as possible to allow as much business, walk-in business as possible, because you do, you know, you are located in an area where there is a lot of foot traffic and pedestrian, I'm sure, access, so.
Well, I'm sure it's economically driven. If there's, there's a demand for it, they'll stay open.
They want to make money. I can't see any tenant coming in and not wanting to make more money, if that's feasible. So it doesn't sound like there's.
Well, I seconded it for discussion, so there's a motion, a second, so.
Okay. The maker of the motion want to amend their motion to add a condition, I mean, to add a.
I think, to, I'd like to leave motion to amend the addition.
We need to add the amendment.
Oh, okay. You want, you want to add that as a condition, then?
No, I mean, like, to, because to remove it, right?
No, 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 no. You made a motion. I seconded your motion for discussion. I made no addition to it whatsoever.
He's asking for a friendly amendment to your motion.
No, 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 I wasn't even amending it. It was for discussion, pure discussion. Had there been support, I would have suggested amendment, but if it's just motion, second, no additions.
Okay. Okay, we're going to move forward then, then, as the motion as it stands with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Reposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I think what we needed to do was, we did not say amendment application 2016-05. We only mentioned the other two.
Did you, the motion, I think the, the motion, the additions?
So we need, there's three.
I think there was.
The first one wasn't.
The first was the, was the CUP. The second two were the amendments.
We had the two CUPs and the recommendation to council for the zone change.
Is it understood that the?
So the zone change wasn't.
Correct.
Yes.
Mention amendment application number 2016-05 have not been voted.
So, so Madam Chair, maybe the maker of the motion wants to add those.
Commissioner Mendoza, will you, would you like to amend your motion to include number one, which is the resolution recommending the City Council adopt an ordinance approving amendment application 2016-05?
Yes.
Okay, I have a second still from Commissioner Becerra. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Reposed? Thank you. Thanks for the clarification. Move on to item.
Move on to item number three. Okay. This is the item for, let's see what this is. This is A. Conditional use permit 2017 dash 03. Staff comments?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. This is an application to upgrade from a Type 41 to Type 47 ABC license to allow for the sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits for on-premise consumption at an existing restaurant at 1801 South Main Street, Unit E. The application was submitted by Mr. Joseph Rodriguez on behalf of Marisco's Hector Number One Restaurant. Currently, the restaurant is entitled under a land use certificate to sell beer and wine for on-premise consumption. No alterations, expansions, or changes in hours of operation are proposed at this time. And as proposed, the application requires approval of a conditional use permit. The property is located within the South Main Commercial, South Main Street Commercial Zoning District, within a multi-tenant commercial building located on the east side of Main Street, between Berkeley and Occidental Streets. It's surrounded by commercial businesses and residential uses immediately to the east. To provide some site context, here's a view of the elevations from the street as seen from Main Street. And here's the site plan showing the 1,850 square foot restaurant and surrounding uses and businesses on the site. Here is the floor plan showing the internal configuration of the building with the kitchen, restroom facilities, entrances, and windows. And it's to note, in regards to the conditional use permit, the alcohol display and storage areas are in compliance with the city's requirement of being less than 5% of the gross floor area. The conditional use permit will provide customers with the ability to order beer, wine, and distilled spirits for purchase with a meal. The site meets all the standards of Santa Ana Municipal Code in regards to an eating establishment selling alcoholic beverages. As part of the community outreach, the president of the Madison Park Neighborhood Association was contacted. They did decline a meeting with the applicant and expressed concerns of noise, disturbances, and after-hours operations in regards to the business operations. In addition, as a courtesy, a notice of the public hearing was also mailed to representatives of Memorial Park, Wilshire Square, Delhi, East Side, Hettinger, and Memorial Park Neighborhood Associations. As part of our standard review, the police department did review the conditional use permit and does not oppose granting the CUP and the operational standards and conditions of approval, which does include a condition for staff to review the operations of the business and report back to the Planning Commission within a year. With those conditions, approval, any nuisances will be mitigated to the nearby neighborhood. The Alcoholics and Beverage Control District does establish standards for census tracts and recommends 11 on-sale and five off-sale establishments within the tract. And currently, there are five on-sale and four off-sale establishments. In regards to calls for service, in the past year, there were 20 calls for service at this address for police services. Of those calls, five resulted in police reports for the business location. As such, staff does require, recommend approval of conditional use permit as conditioned. And that concludes the staff presentation for tonight. The applicant and staff are available for questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions, staff?
I do.
Commissioner, we'll start with Becerra.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So would staff, whether it's planning or police, be able to clarify the nature of that one call for service that was with assault with a deadly weapon?
Good evening, Commissioners. There were five calls for service at that address that resulted in a police report. Four of those were for false alarms. One was for, excuse me, an assault. It started off as a disturbance when they arrived and listened to the complaining party. They ended up writing a report for an assault, but no arrests was made. So it might have been only one person there.
So was the assault, and the reason I ask this is because we see this in our downtown where, you know, something happens, and, you know, if you're a person on the street and you're calling to report the incident, you're going to report whatever place it happened in front of. So if you're outside of Chapter 1 in downtown, something may not have happened within the facility, but you would say, oh, something happened in front of Chapter 1. So I assume within the logs, it would be logged as a call to Chapter 1, even though there wasn't an issue generated by Chapter 1 per se. It was just a locational, I guess, place to show that this is where it happened. And what I was curious about was with this particular incident, is it something that happened, you know, in the facility? Or is this something that just, you know, may have happened that was in the parking lot, but not caused by any action inside the restaurant?
The information that I have doesn't indicate. It just, I just put in the address, 1801. And so it could have happened in the parking lot, it could have happened in adjacent business. Most likely, it's associated with this activity here.
Okay.
Doesn't mean it's associated with the operation. Just means that there was a call for service for disturbance and resulted in an assault report.
Okay, okay.
That's all I have on that.
Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Don't leave, Bill, in case you have, in case you have other questions.
I think my question is for you too.
I'm sorry, yes.
So it was mentioned, there was 20 calls this year so far, and that's from that establishment?
In the last 365 days, I ran it again today. So 365 days from today, there was 19 calls. So one fell off in that, you know, portion when we were researching. But these calls aren't necessarily calls for service, but it's just reported activity. So a police officer could be pulling someone over and giving them the ticket, and they call in their activity at this address, it's marked as that. So these aren't necessarily all calls, you know, from this establishment.
Now, will I take it you're with the police department?
I am with the Santa Ana Police Department, yes.
Okay, thank you. I have another question then, because I noticed that we're receiving more and more liquor license requests. And this one in particular, along with the next one, they seem to be in very high areas of crime, the grid. This one's ranked four out of 103 in its grid, and the other one is ranked one, the next project. So my question to you is, how do these get assessed by the police department? And what is looked at in order to approve a liquor license in areas that are such, have high crime?
So the guidelines we get from the Alcoholics and Beverage Control is to have consideration for establishments that are wishing new licenses in areas that show significant activity. And they look at a 20% threshold. Mostly, that is for off-sale licenses, like a liquor store. If there's an abundance of liquor licenses in a, for off-sale, in a place with high crime, they look at that as over-concentration. So for on-sale, we look at it a little bit differently. Our downtown is making a new footprint with the service industry and restaurants and need alcohol licenses to compete. It doesn't mean that people are going to go from establishment to establishment and drink themselves to oblivion. It just, you know, they're competing in an area where people are focused on. Also happens that these areas have a lot of activity, and that's why we have a lot of police activity, because people see someone tripped and fell, people see there's a car accident. And these are all part of the activity that's documented. So we try and look at what's important in there and what we can work with, or what's going to put us over the edge. Okay, too many liquor stores near a school, we might say it's over-concentrated. A new restaurant opening up in downtown, or someone wanting to compete by offering a distilled spirit rather than beer and wine, we're going to take that for what it's worth. This restaurant has a liquor license. If we don't grant the CUP today, they're still going to have a liquor license. They're just not going to be able to sell one other item. I can speak further when the next CUP comes up, because theirs is different than this one.
So guidelines are different for different areas?
Guidelines, well, guidelines are different for the different uses of that ABC license. We're getting more brewers. They're not selling alcohol to the public. We're going to look at that a little different, but we still look at the same concentration. We still deliver the same report.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Commissioner Win?
Officer William, according to staff report, the issue of noises, disturbances, and after-hour operation reported on this establishment, could you give us more detail on that?
Are you talking about complaints about their operation?
Yes, that's what I raised from the resident.
From the analysis I did, I don't see anything on that. I know my superiors received a written complaint recently, the beginning of March, referenced the noise level inside. That was from a patron who didn't appreciate how loud it was. I don't have any record of noise complaints generating from the outside, other than what the staff came up with from discussing with the neighborhood associations on how they feel about it. There are plenty of people who don't appreciate business operation, but don't report it either.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mendoza?
I think this question is more for staff. This is the first time, at least I read this in the project analysis. And it says, "In addition, a condition of approval is included which requires the staff review of the relational effects of the restaurant on the community in one year," and that a memo compared to reporting issues to the planning commission. Is this the case for all that already have a non-permit, but want to approve the still drinks? Or is this the first time I see this, like where we would follow up in a year? Or is this something new?
From my understanding, this condition was added to this particular CUP. It has been used in the past, for instance, on the Blinking Owl, which was a different type of alcohol license for microbrewery and the tours and things. It did have the same condition.
Right. And we will be reporting back to you on that tonight.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Questions, sir?
Kind of on the same line of questioning of Commissioner Mendoza. So what triggered this? In other words, with Blinking Owl, if I remember correctly, it was the impact of the fact that the facility had either zero or one parking space on the site. This looks amply parked, or at least decently parked, I mean, depending on everybody's threshold for parking. But with that being said, what triggered this particular condition from staff's perspective?
It's more in response to the concerns that we've received from, feedback from the community.
So, okay, so from what we heard from the community, or what staff had heard from the community, this was recommended?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Commissioner?
And what will happen at that one year? Let's say there's a lot of complaints, neighborhood association's not happy, what would happen then? Are you going to pull that?
I think we'll revisit that once that one year comes up.
Okay, but what are the possibilities? I mean, if you can give me an example, because if we're voting on this, I'd like to know what would happen. What kind of review would be done?
The intention was to give us a mechanism in which we could automatically consider whether or not we wanted, you wanted to review the way that it was operating and the operating conditions that were on the use. And if they needed to be modified in some way to make them, you know, better neighbors or operate in a way that was more sensitive to the surrounding uses. That would give us that opportunity. It would be an opportunity to amend your conditions, or if it was a very difficult use, you could ultimately revoke that CUP as well, or initiate revocation proceedings. This, but one thing that has been said already is they do have a current use permit for beer and wine. They currently have, so this is a separate use permit to amend it to allow the distilled spirits.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's no other questions of staff. We're going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. I have several request of speak cards on this agenda item, so I will call each person up individually. And please stay true to the three-minute allocated time. The lights will indicate when you're coming close to your three minutes. A red light will indicate that your three minutes is up. So please stay true to those time limits. I hate to cut you off, but if I have to, I will, when that red light turns red. First speaker will be Adolfo Sierra.
Hi, good evening. My name is Adolfo Sierra. I'm a resident of the Neighborhood Association for the last 23 years, and I've been involved with the association for the last 16, 17 years. The reason I'm coming here today, and I, we asking with Neighborhood Alliance to deny these requests, even though they already have a permit, is going to, if you allow this, it's going to increase more problems. And I just going to go, I don't have these recommendations on the paperwork that was sent to me. Also, I don't have the additional facts that they just stated in front of us. So it's kind of like they holding information from us, or I don't know what's going on behind this. But this is what I see. You have 20 calls for the police, and I don't know if that, Mr. William Govan, is that you? Okay. 20 calls in the last year. It makes 18 days, every 18 days we have a call. Am I correct? Am I doing my calculations correct? So we have every two weeks a call. And people don't call because, of course, we know what's going on in the city, and we have a very large immigrant community that they even don't have a lot of trust on the police. That's one of my things. Additionally, your strategic plan says that we have five goals. Community safety, number one. We have youth, education, and recreation. We also have community health. We have community health. Engagement and sustainability. We have community facilities. We don't have a community center over there. We have a park, of course, but we need more than that for the community, not only one business, but the whole community. Four neighborhoods are working on this for, already for some time. And we asking you not to move forward, deny it permanently, so we don't have to go into having more calls and have disturbances and a lot of noise. And I live in Occidental Street, so it's impacting my neighborhood. And this place is surrounded by R1, R2, and R3 residents, family residents, very heavily populated place, and there's a lot of calls. And lately, we have a lot of shootings in the city. If we want this, okay, think about it. The police, the police found there is 20% greater number of reported crimes than the average number found on all reporting districts, 20%. Even though they consider this information making is recommendation, therefore, the Santa Ana Police Department doesn't oppose granting the proposal CUP. I don't know the logic behind, you guys wanting, or the city wanting to approve this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I have the next speaker, Jose Reyes.
Yeah, good evening. I'm also with Madison Park Neighborhood Association, but we work with three other neighborhoods, which is Wilshire Square, Henninger Park, and East Side. And I just wanted to clarify a couple of points that we brought up on this project analysis. The Neighborhood Association, I'm currently the treasurer for the Neighborhood Association in Madison Park. The Neighborhood Association refused to meet with Mr. Rodriguez and the business owners because they had come to our neighborhoods, neighborhood meetings for several years. And I wish you could be there to see the visceral response from the mothers from Kennedy Elementary, who is suffering from another location of Hector, Marisco's Hector, the one on Standard, and McFadden. And it also affects us in the neighborhood, because you're asking now that we're going to have another location diagonally from the two corners in our neighborhood. So the South Main is a... corners in our neighborhood. So, the South Main is exactly at the end of our neighborhood in one of the corners, and the other, the current location on McFadden is in the other corner. And so, we have refused to meet with them because they also requested to meet with the school principals, both at Kennedy and at Madison, and they also refused to meet with them because we felt this kind of businesses are poor neighbors for us. There's a lot of things going on. It's unfortunate that the gentleman went only back 360 days, but you need to put it on the content of what has been going on for a longer time than that. There was a person that was a staff that was coming out of the South Main Business that walked home into the neighborhood, and that person was a staff on the corner of Howard, and that was two or three years ago. I don't recall exactly when it was. But he got gotten into a fight. That was documented, the officer reported on the register. Got into a fight in the South Main Business, and walked home in the neighborhood, and right on the crossing of the Pacific Electric Park Trail in Howard Street, he got stabbed, and he died later on of those wounds. So, what we're trying to say here is the big safety concerns. There's loud music, there's very aggressive security guards. Like, after certain time on weekends, I don't go shopping to Stater Brothers anymore. Why? Because there's no parking. Maybe the place is packed, the music is loud, there are fights in the parking lot. People, it's not a family business. It's, people go get integrated there, and there's fights, and music, and issues. And do we wanna be, as a neighborhood, we wanna be between two of those businesses from the same owners? We already have a very bad precedent. So, I'm asking you, please, listen to the community. You should have gotten a letter for not only our four neighborhoods, but also from their height, and even residents from Memorial Park about our concerns.
Thank you. I have a speaker card from Alex Vega.
Excuse me? Alex Vega? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. After I hear these testimonies, man, it's very true. And I used to go into that restaurant on Main about probably 20 years ago, and it was totally different. And I agree. And now, it's like a hotspot, they call it hotspot. And about the security, aggressive, yes, because I visited myself, and there is some issues. And I even told management about, this company doesn't have lab insurance. And not only that, and you know, as right now, the crime is going up. And unlike downtown, there's police, and there's, it's a different issue. But down on South Main, there's issues that I agree, I totally agree, because if you allow, I heard about Mr. Rodriguez and things going on inside politics, and no, politics, no. Community first. Community first, public safety, neighborhood. And I'm a community organizer, and I call myself Santanero for Life, and I see people here, they understand the issues, and thank you for allowing me to speak. And I have to agree with the community, and please, do it for the community, deny it.
Thank you. We'll hear from Hector Ramirez. Hector Ramirez. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and, oh, re-Hector.
How are you guys today? Speaking on behalf of Hector's, being a resident of Santa Ana here for over 35 years, I frequented the place, always had a good experience there. I've taken my family there, take the kids, take my parents all the time. I meet clients out there. I've always enjoyed it. They've always got good service, even the parking on the inside and the outside. Any one of the Hector's that I frequented, it's always the same thing. It's a joint, enjoyable experience. I myself never seen any problems or any trouble. I visited there late, visited there in the afternoons, late nights, whatnot, and it's always been pretty much the same thing. Got a good experience from it. Like I said, I like going to the place. I take my family. I've got five boys. We go out there, we have some dinner. We enjoy the music that they have in there, and always have had a good time.
Sir, there's no address on your speaker card. Can you please provide your address?
Yes, I'm in Santa Ana.
Yes, your home address.
1418 South Van Ness Avenue, Woolshire Square.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. Is that the?
Pretty much that's it, just wanted to-
Okay, great. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I have some speaker cards where addresses are missing, so I'll probably ask you when you come up for your address. Rosa Linda Hernandez? Could you provide your address as well?
110 South Occidental Street.
Occidental?
Occidental.
Thank you.
Yes, I come here from Marisco Sector, and I've been here in the neighborhood for more than 20 years, and been taking my family, myself, and all family members, and we go have dinner, lunch, and we have a good time. The music is good, the parking, everything's no problem. We have never seen no fighting, anything. And we enjoy it because the music and the good experience of the restaurant, they serve us good. I haven't seen no problem at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Susana Castro. Castro's the last name. I might not have put the right first name on it. Oh. I don't think I understood. Could you please tell me what your first name is?
What's that?
Your first name?
Susana Castro.
Okay, okay, then I have it right. And your home address?
You know what? I'm sorry, we're gonna have to speak a little bit louder.
Home address. Your address where you live?
How do I know them? I'm sorry.
No, your address.
Oh, it's 1520 East Nubian Lane. That's in Orange.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
That's it? Okay.
No, no, did you wanna say something?
Oh, no, no, no. I'm just here answering your questions. That's all.
Are you in support of the project?
Am I?
Are you in support of the ABC license for the restaurant?
I'm a little bit hard appearing. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Are you in support of the project?
Can you go, Sarah will tell you.
Are you in support of the project?
Oh, yes. Yes.
Okay. That's what I needed to know. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker is Juana Savelo. I think it's, yes. Sir, could you also provide your home address?
My home address, it's 1414 and a half. It's Fourth Street in Santa Ana. And I support, I mean, to approve it. I mean, I've been customer for many, many years. I would say for more than 20 years, and I always go there, enjoy myself with all my family and friends, and I never see any problem at all. So, it's a great place to go and a great place to eat.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, Louis Anoffrey? Sir, could you also provide your address?
Yes, my address is 713 South Holiday Street. And I'm a part owner of Taqurias Amora, which is located on Main Street in Alton. And I've known Ellie for over 12 years. I go there a lot also. Take my kids. Well, I don't take my grown kids because they don't like banda music. They rather go to original mics, you know, but it's okay, you know. But anyway, it's a pleasant place to be, and I hope you approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker cards for Javier Espinoza.
Commissioner Verino?
Yes.
Can I clarify for the audience that you are allowed to ask the address, but they do not necessarily have to provide it for them?
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I didn't, it didn't say optional, so I just assumed. So, okay, I won't be asking addresses from the companies. Thank you.
My address is 2210 Sockbaker Santana.
Thank you. What would you like to say about the project?
I come in for support of the, and I like the Marisco Sector, you know? And I think so what, it's one restaurant for the families, and when the families have visitors and the other families of the other countries, they go to Marisco Sector. It's a beautiful restaurant, and it's good. And if you're going, can you join all the foodies? Good. I don't speak English, but-
Thank you. So far, you're doing very good. Thank you.
Excuse me.
Jose Perez?
Good evening. I'm Jose Perez, and I'm here to support Marisco's Hector's because I have been a customer for over 25 years. Never had an issue, always good food, good service, and no complaints regarding the noise or anything. Parking is good. I have nothing else to say, just to support them. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Ernesto Martinez?
405 Carwood Place, Santana. And I'm here to support the CUP for a license type 47. I know this restaurant for over 20 years, since the year 1998, since I got here to Santana. And I always take my family weekends or weekdays, and it's a very good food, seafood. And I know there's been maybe issues, but it's not just for, for the things that the restaurant sometimes, maybe people got a little annoying, but it's not because of the restaurant. And I keep to support the food approval. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Juan Tarifa. Sorry, I said that wrong.
Hi, my name is Juan Jose Tarifa. I'm living 230 West One. I support to Hector's because the food is so good, and even my family came from LA to eat in that restaurant. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Irma Haraway?
Hello, good evening. It's Hauri. My name is Irma Hauri. I have been the president of the Woolshire Square Neighborhood Association for the last four years. I have been a resident of Madison and Woolshire Square for the last 38 years. I'm the co-founder of the Neighborhood Alliance, and I'm one of the groups of the Pacific Electric Park Collaborative, which we included UCI and 40 graduate students of the whole four neighborhoods association. I've also, I'm also a financial advisor and a Realtor for the last 30 years. I was married and lived on Maple Street for 11 years, so I'm intimately aware of the neighborhood. We do need family restaurants, and I've heard that the food is excellent. Not a problem. Wine and beer with food, not a problem. But hard liquor in a small area that is surrounded by only residential, and we're hoping to have a community center, the physicality of it, it is the issue. That is a problem. If you look at Hector's Marisco on Broadway, it is an entertainment center, wonderful. It is located in the correct area, although the music is extremely loud. My family is from Zacatecas. I know Tamborazo. I know banda, and I enjoy it, but everything has its proper place. The extension and expansion for hard liquor and making it a bigger area when the parking is so limited will impact the residential neighborhood and the families there. Plus, it's right across the street from me. Very nice, large family. The marketplace, Superior, which I go all the time. I walk there and my in-laws. That will impact, so the mix is not appropriate. So, from Woolshire Square and the board, we are against it. Also, with Henninger and the Alliance, they've also told me to let you know that they're not supporting it, and the leadership in Eastside, because we want a great South Main. I've also been on the board of the South Main Merchant Association, so again, I'm very familiar, but we are strongly, strongly in opposition up to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I have one last speaker card for Richard Garcia.
All right. Good evening, board, again. I've been a native of Santa Ana for all my life, 53 years. And one of the main issues here is when my father was alive, he was an employee of the city of Santa Ana. He always shopped at Stater Brothers. There was no issues. But the problem there was, for a while, Stater Brothers had issues, we had issues, the neighborhood had issues, due to the fact that they had illegal valet parking going on there. We couldn't get out because there was no parking. We had to double park. We called, I called the commanders. The commanders sent me over to the fire department. The fire department, it was a big war until we finally got it to the point. We pushed it, we pushed it. Now, the valet park is gone. But it took a long while to do that. So, that's given a negative impact for the community. We don't want this issue happening the same thing at Stater Brothers, the same thing at Stater Brothers happening at Superior. The guard over at Hector's Marisco, he put cones out there. If anybody even tries to attempt to park there, he gets very aggressive to everybody, even the neighbors. We've had cars parked out there doing illegal things in the neighborhood. And I've been the president for, associate for Memorial Park for the past 10 years. And we strongly, the board, the directors, strongly disagree with this approval. Totally. It's gonna make a negative impact for the community. We need positive impacts. I'm not saying anything about the food. I've eaten there before, and the food's great. But the problem is, is if we change this from a type 41 to a 47, that's gonna be a negative impact for the south side of associations around the area. So, please, let's deny this approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. If anybody else would like to speak, this would be the last opportunity on this item. Okay, seeing that, we're gonna close the public hearing and bring it back. The commission for discussion and motion. Commissioner Nunez?
Madam Chair, I would like to ask staff, what the operating hour of this restaurant?
The hours of operation are gonna be from 9:00 AM to 12:00 AM.
Okay. And I also indicated, noticed on the CUP that with the live entertainment, including karaoke, and dancing, and music, and so on, what the hour of the entertainment, anything been going on from the time opening until the end of the 12:00 midnight?
So, the applicant does have a current live entertainment permit that was renewed last September. It's required to be renewed annually, and with that, the current hours of operation allow them to have live entertainment up until 12:00 AM.
From, do you have a starting time, like, or it's in the 9:00 AM all the way to the closing time?
I don't believe it specifies a starting time.
Thank you.
I have a question as well. As regards to the security, under the pressure, there is security because of the entertainment license?
Correct.
Do you know the hours of security is on site?
I do not.
Okay. Ask. Okay, thank you. Is there any questions of staff? Thanks. I want to, so, Jos, can you, can you answer the question that's about the security?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Atlantic Commission. The hours of operation, again, is from 9:00 AM to 12:00 AM. To answer the question concerning the type of entertainment at that time, again, it's usually later in the afternoons, usually during the regular business hours, perhaps- perhaps after 4:00 or 5:00 o'clock. They do have migrant musicians that come through. But the actual established entertainment aspect of it starts in the evenings.
So what time does the security onsite?
It's usually set between 6:00 o'clock, 7:00 o'clock into the evening hours.
Until closing?
It depends on the type of entertainment, yes.
Okay, so it's not consistent?
It's not consistent. Sometimes 11:00, sometimes to closing. Usually, staff usually start shutting down about 11:00 o'clock.
Did anybody have any questions? Thank you.
If I may interject, just a couple items, just to bring commission and staff on track here. Number one, we appreciate the community coming out. Certainly, the commission to hear concerning planning for putting this thing together. Some of the mitigating factors that we've heard, or we're doing because of the neighborhood concerns, are basically just that. We appreciate the involvement of the community. We appreciate the comments they made. And some of the things that I like to bring forth in terms of what Marisco Sector has done since. Marisco Sector has independently cooperated or incorporated each and every one of them. There was some comment concerning 1208 East McFadden. The concern that we brought today is 1801. Two different corporations. Two of the things that we've done, again, we've heard the concerns of the music aspect and the security. At 1801, there is a security person there all day long into the evening hours. So they pretty much take care of the parking lot issues that been forth. In terms of the music and those type of items, there was a meeting that was had with staff identifying those issues and what it is that we're going to do in order to cut down on some of this loud music issues. They come up with a compromise in terms of the type of music and application that are going to be cut down considerably. In addition, the infrastructure of the business has been changed based on the corporate rules that were given to the facility. Right now, we're in the process now of training all the managers, recreating a better infrastructure of the internal aspect of the business, training the staff on what it is that needs to be done. I've reached out to the police department. They've actually been courteous enough to come out and do an actual inspection of the property. In addition to that, we asked for them to give us some ideas and what we need to do in order to maintain the level of ambiance at that restaurant. They did come out. I had four officers come out. And once again, they took the time to do that. Contacted, been contacted with city agencies, again, with the community development people, and asked them for their concerns, what's going on, what it is that we need to do in order to maintain that level of quality and enjoyment at this facility. They've also gave me some good information that we've now implemented. Since then, for the last couple of months, I've brought together all staff and created a monthly meeting mandatory of all staff involved in these restaurants, explained to them the concerns the neighbor does have. And some are recommended as the police department has given us, and some of the experiences that we've experienced and how we are going to adhere to the entertainment permit or security plan that we have. In addition to that, we circulated a couple petitions within the 500-foot area of the facility. And we ended up with over 100 and some signed petitions by local residents endorsing the project and endorsing the CUP. Out of those petitions, I received no calls for additional information other than the fact that here's what we're doing. Do you approve? Would you approve this CUP? And in closing, number one, thank for hearing. We do take the neighborhood concerns very seriously. We're now in the process of revamping the internal infrastructure of the management. There's no more training. There's going to be additional training through ABC that will be put together for them in order for them to maintain a level of quality of service that we currently provide.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Public hearing has been closed. Do we have any comments or does anybody have any discussion about this item?
I guess I have one question.
Okay, Commissioner Nunez.
Do they have, I stepped out for a minute. Do they have a live entertainment permit at this point?
Yes.
Right, did you?
They have a live entertainment permit. It was, I think it was renewed in September of 16.
It's the correct one.
It met the requirements for renewal. I don't know anything more than that. You have a question? Want to ask a question about the entertainment? I guess I want to start the discussion then. And here is one that I'm just, it's conflicting in my mind because I get two groups. I've got a group supporting the project and I've got a group that's not. But I do have serious concerns regarding the police calls to that address. I know some of the businesses that are adjacent to that are only operational during the day. So if these calls were coming in at night, it's highly probable that those are for this restaurant or patrons of this restaurant. It's unfortunate we don't have more details as far as noise complaints. It sounds to me like there is some concerns about the level of noise from the establishment. And it is true as well that it's adjacent to residential, which has me very concerned. Another thing that conflicts me, though, is that there seems to be a lot more complaints about the operation at Standard and McFadden, more so than this location. So there's a conflict there for me as well. I have a question on that. Is the Marisco Sector on Standard, McFadden have a type 47?
No, it's a type 41.
That has a type 41?
Right.
Well, that's even worse. Because they got a 41 and they got lots of issues over there. I appreciate the fact that we, there's a lot going on there to try to mitigate some issues. I think that the mitigation's happening a little too late. I think that that should have been happening a long time ago if there were concerns from the neighborhood of noise. Someone who wants a 47 and wants to serve hard liquor is going to make a huge effort to make everybody around them happy. Because this is something that they want, something that's going to drive more money to the establishment. If there is any indication that there's problems, you would be reaching out to the neighborhood well in advance of coming for a type 47. Not when you want it. And I've seen that happen in other application. People make all kinds of promises that they're going to do this and this and this. And then after the fact, when nobody's enforcing it, they're back to doing their old stuff. And I have an obligation, sitting on this dais, to make sure that everybody is protected. Protect the business owner. I agree that they have great food at this restaurant, the establishment. But I have concerns about what the 47 is going to do for that, for the neighborhood, for the surrounding community. I'm not comfortable at this point to make that decision to increase their CUP to a 47. I mean, their ABC to a 47. I would entertain a motion, or I'd like to hear other comments from my colleagues, if anyone has any. Commissioner Nunez?
Madam Chair, I am pro-business. I do support the business development now, especially in Main Street area. But I do, it's not really convinced, able to convince me that the type 47 will be a great beneficial to the restaurant. If the establishment is a bona fide eating establishment and did not have any type of liquor license, I would for support it to issue, allow a permit for the type 41 liquor license. But if the establishment already have beer and wine already, added hard liquor, I am uncomfortable with it at this time. Unless we have better report from the committee, better report from crime ratio and carpool service and so on. Also, on top of that, the establishment is somewhat small, under 2,000 square feet. And I'm wondering how much space inside the establishment for entertainment? We talk about dancing, karaoke, live music and so on. And all that add into it, I am leaning toward direction to deny the application for the CUP. The motion to deny the application, CUP 2017-03.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Is that a motion?
I think that it turned to...
That's a motion, correct?
Yes, it is a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to say something real quick.
Would you like to second that before your comment?
Second? I just wanted to...
So we need a second?
I need a second.
Okay, second.
Okay, I've got a motion for denial of conditional use permit 2017-03 and a second. Commissioner Contreras, leave.
I just wanted to thank everybody that came out today. I greatly appreciate when the neighborhood associations come out and tell us how they feel about it because you live there. I live in your city as well, but I don't live there. The patrons, I appreciate you coming out as well. I'm sure everyone loves to hear that they have great food. I want to go eat there now. But at least everyone's still going to get to enjoy Hector's. I think we just have to find a happy medium when we're all living in that same space and sharing it. So thank you for all of you coming out tonight.
Before we take the vote, I would also like to say that although I will be voting with the motion, I would encourage the business owner to do what they need to do to decrease police calls to this address, to reduce the loud music, and to do what they need to do to, so everyone in the community is happy and comfortable. It should be a win-win for everybody. There should be, everybody, you know, when we have projects, we want everybody to come here and be happy about what's happening. And I think that, should that happen sometime in the future, I think that from my perspective, I would be more than happy to increase that. But that's what I want to be comfortable, that everybody is, that this is a good decision for everybody around it. I'm just not comfortable at this time.
Madam Chair, if I may comment before we vote?
Commissioner Versera?
Thank you. I think the one thing that frustrates me, sitting up here right now, is that we get these applications that come to us, and it's not because they had one mess-up, two mess-ups. I mean, it is so much that the folks from the adjacent community came out and thank you for coming out, had to come out to let us know this. And I guess, in addition, what really also frustrates me is I've got a tale of two applications. I mean, it's the same application, but I've got our staff who I trust telling us, well, you know, if we can add one or two conditions, we think it'll be okay. We've got the community telling us, because they live there and they experience it day in and day out, that I don't think a condition or two is going to really make it. And as we were all talking, I was just looking at these thinking, is there something we can add? Is there just a tweak that could satisfy? But the more I considered the testimony of the community, I just, we're at a loss. So I just, I look at staff and I just ask you, you know, as these cases come up where, you know, you've got such community opposition based on police calls, based on other legitimate concerns, that we actually see them beforehand. Because, you know, as you said, they have a use permit right now for beer and wine. It's not permanent. I mean, it may be a process, but it can be revoked. And I think for the community to feel that, you know, everybody up here at some point in time this year, or this meeting, had talked about public safety as a concern. Well, that's one way of showing that public safety is a concern, is cracking down on bad operators. And I just, it really frustrates me that we had to actually have a hearing about whether to give an operator who's been deemed bad more privileges to serve more alcohol for their establishment. And it just, it really frustrates me. So I, too, will be joining my colleagues in the vote as well.
Okay, we'll make that call. All of us in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
We voted.
Absolutely. Well, we voted.
Oh, okay.
Can she still be afforded a comment?
I didn't say aye.
Okay. No, 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 no. So your vote is a nay?
Correct, but I wanted to say a comment. I just wanted to say to Marisco Sector, thank you so much for being here. I'm going to vote...
Against.
I'm going to vote against what my colleagues voted to the community. I grew up in Madison neighborhood. I'm also pro-business. And I don't think that adding the distilled spirits matters. I would have personally just voted no to let them sell alcohol, period. So I also, I trust the police. The police here says that they do not oppose the granting this. So, you know, and like Commissioner Versera said, he trusts that the staff is also doing their job in recommending this. So I'm going to vote no.
Thank you. So that concludes item number three. We're moving on to item number four. Which is... Is the conditional use permit number 2017-09? And staff will make a presentation on this?
Thank you, Chair Verino. Good evening, members of the planning commission. It's been about 10 months since I've been up here, so it's good to be back for discussion tonight. It's the esports arena. It's a proposal to sell alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption at the existing esports arena, which is also in the process of constructing an onsite cafe to sell food as well. So as just stated, this is a proposal to construct a cafe within the existing esports arena. Esports arena is located here in downtown. It's a computer gaming esports venue that also can be configured for arena-style events on the weekends. The project with, in conjunction with the construction of the cafe, would propose to sell beer and wine for on-premise consumption. There's no other modification proposed this time to the existing conditional use permits for the site. So the site is the Ramona Building. It's at the corner of Fifth and Sycamore. It's located in the downtown area transit zoning code. It's completely surrounded by commercial, institutional, and public uses. There's a large parking structure operated by the city directly to the east. There's a private parking lot across Sycamore to the west, the Church of Scientology to the north, and then some other commercial uses along Fourth Street to the south. And this is a view of the esports arena. It's been operating for about two years now. And this is the site plan, showing the footprint of the building essentially, and then just a zoomed-in close-up of the floor plan of the proposed cafe within the esports. Again, there's no exterior modifications proposed. This would all take place within the footprint of the existing esports arena. So I know there's a lot of text up there, but I'll just take you through some background and then analysis. So back in 2014, the esports arena came to this body for approval for two conditional use permits. The first was for an after-hours conditional use permit to allow them to operate until 2:00 AM on select evenings, on Fridays and Saturdays, I believe. The second was for indoor commercial recreation or entertainment. This would allow the actual computer gaming facility. At the time, esports was starting to make headlines. It was a new type of sporting, essentially the idea of viewing individuals who play computer games. It's not a cyber cafe where you go to pay by the hour for like word processing and internet access. It's an actual place where you go to play e-games that have grown in popularity throughout the world, essentially. At the time, the conditions of approval on those two conditional use permits required special events plans to be submitted to planning and PD for review whenever they had a large-scale special event, had to contain noise within the building, restrict age during certain hours. So if someone under the age of 18 tried to go in during normal school hours, they had to be accompanied by a parent. They also had to construct sidewalk improvements. There's a brand-new crosswalk there with flashing lights for pedestrian safety and all that. They met all of these conditions. One of the conditions was also that they had to apply for a separate conditional use permit if they ever wanted to sell alcohol, which is where we're at this evening. So in order to qualify to even sell alcohol onsite, they need to have a food establishment where you can order... where you can order a hot meal. And that goes back to the floor plan in the previous slide. And then, within the past 365 days, just for some extra information, there were 24 calls for police service here, of which nine resulted in a police report. And then walking through those a little bit, four of those nine were for false burglar alarm. So it could have been someone's car alarm going off on the street or in one of the parking structures nearby. It could have also been the actual eSports arena itself, maybe the alarm went off and just falsely. Four were for theft, and one was for a narcotic violation. Someone may have been on drugs, or someone may have been walking down the sidewalk on drugs. Okay, so now moving on to the analysis. Overall, in the past two years, the operations of the eSports arena have been consistent with the conditions of approval. So staff has not noted any unusual activity there. Every time they've wanted to hold a major special event and shut down Sycamore Street, for example, they've gotten the necessary permits. These things haven't just come out of the blue. So that's been fairly good for them. And it's difficult to say that some of these police incidents are attributable to the actual eSports arena. So a false burglary alarm going off across the street is difficult to directly ascribe to the actual eSports arena. We're not seeing things associated with some of the impactful complaints we often hear from the communities. There's been no calls for a ton of noise. There's been no calls for a ton of litter, any other quality of life impacts that we sometimes hear from other applications. This business itself and the application before you tonight is consistent with other indoor commercial recreational activities in Santa Ana and in Orange County. So a good local example is round-one bowling at Main Place Mall. It's primarily a bowling alley with karaoke and arcade games. It also has a small onsite cafe and sells beer, wine, and hard liquor. Other bowling alleys, other sort of indoor recreational venues throughout the county, most bowling alleys do sell beer and wine, and they have pizza, chicken fingers, all that. This would make this venue consistent with those sorts of entertainment venues as well. In addition, this particular site is away from sensitive land uses. There's no residential nearby. It's all parking structure, parking lot, and commercial buildings that have similar restaurant and retail uses. And then just overall, big picture, eSports arena put Santa Ana and downtown on the map. At the time that it was entitled, this body was actually approving the first dedicated eSports arena in North America. So all other eSports gaming facilities were taking place within convention centers, like the Anaheim Convention Center. This is North America's first dedicated only eSports arena slash gaming venue. So it really actually put us on the map. UC Irvine followed suit, I think, this year, but we were definitely the first. And then, overall, again, the current code standards that apply to a typical beer and wine license will ensure that this remains basically what it is right now. And a spectator venue where you go to be entertained and also take part in computer games, as well as have the option to order food and beer and wine if you so choose, just like the Angel Stadium or the Anaheim Pond. What's it called, the Honda Center? Yeah, I'm not a sports person. So based on this analysis and this background, staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit twenty seventeen dash nine. We'd be happy to answer any questions unless they relate to sports. And the applicant has sent an operations manager here as well to help answer any questions. Thank you.
Thanks. Ali, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So the cafe is, fits about 50 people, it's small, but the venue's much bigger. So will they be able to purchase alcohol and then take it into the entire venue?
That's correct. The application would allow individuals to take beer and wine into the venue, especially during spectator events. So if you're viewing it, and you go upstairs and sit on the mezzanine level, you can have a beer while watching people on the computer.
And it's an open venue for all ages?
It is, similar to like a bowling alley or something like that. Clearly, you know, a minor would not be able to order alcohol.
And I saw that, so they have an after-hours, but I didn't see any hours constraints on the, this. So is the expectation they will serve up until 2:00 a.m.?
The expectation is that they'll be consistent with the current after-hours CUP. So on event nights, it would be the ability to sell until 2:00 a.m., and on non-event nights, they'd have to stop selling at 12:00, midnight. Whether the applicant wants to restrict those hours due to the expensive equipment and onsite and stuff like that, that would be up to them if they'd like to answer.
So are you saying that the after-hours is only conducive to the special events, to their event nights? Is that how it's written?
That's how the original conditions of approval were written.
So if we approve this, then that it would follow suit, or does it have to be specified in here that alcohol will only be served on non-event nights ending at midnight and event nights until 2:00?
This request would allow them to sell alcohol insofar as they're open, yeah.
As long as they're open.
And they're open when-
Because they have-
-we specified in the previous CUP.
Okay. That clarifies that. Thank you. Commissioner Contrerasly?
Okay. Will they first begin selling food before they start selling alcohol? Will the food be established first?
Yes, they cannot sell alcohol unless they have a fully functional kitchen that's been opened and finaled by the city and the health department and all that.
Okay, so is that a condition that's in here, that once that's all ready to go, then, or simultaneously, I don't know?
No, that's a good question. That's actually just the law. It's the law for the city and for the state.
And you mentioned earlier that kids can only go in there with parents?
During school hours. So if someone under the 18 tried to go and play eSports on a Thursday at like 1:00 p.m., they'd be age-restricted. They'd have to have a parent with them. But after 3:00 p.m., when school's done, someone who's 16 could go in and, you know, play to, pay to play an eSports.
Okay. Commissioner Versera?
Thank you, ma'am, Chair. So, again, I know I'm beating the horse here, so let me just make sure I understand this because I'm reading the staff report, and it's saying, provided alcoholic beverages, alcoholic beverage sales will comply with the city's regulations that limit sales from 8:00 a.m. to midnight. So if we approve this CUP as conditioned, they're not going to be allowed to sell alcohol past midnight, even though they're technically allowed to be open till 2:00 a.m. now with their after-hours CUP that this commission previously approved.
The city's codes state that you can only sell alcohol until midnight unless an after-hours conditional use permit is approved. In this case, since that after-hours CUP was approved three years ago, they already have the ability to stay open past midnight. Therefore, since they already have that ability granted by this body, they can sell alcohol also past midnight because of the approval of that CUP.
Okay, yeah, because this was confusing. So essentially, right now, once we approve this, or if we approve this, then the applicant would then be able to sell alcohol during the hours of operation?
That's correct.
And that may be past midnight?
That could be until 2:00 a.m. on certain nights.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
Just had a curiosity. What's the age demographics of eSports? What does that look like?
I'll allow the applicant to answer that. Not going to embarrass myself.
I knew that was fine by you guys.
The average age of participants in the eSports arena is about 25 years old.
Twenty-five years old, as a participant, as a spectator?
Yeah.
So spectators, the spectator and participant is average age 25 years old?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, when you sit there and say average age, look at it from another perspective. I mean, underage versus over 21, what does that look like from a percentage of ID? I'm just trying to get a feel for how it's going to be, how many underage individuals show up at eSports on a daily basis?
Okay, I think I can answer that. So like, we open at 4:00 p.m., let's say, Monday, today. I would say 30% of the people that come in are going to be under 21, and 70% of all the other people are going to be over 21.
And that, obviously, as the hours go along, changes, less underage, more over.
The younger crowd will typically weed out as the night goes on, and the older crowd will come out in higher numbers.
Is there going to be, now, the point was made that the individuals could travel around throughout the facility with the open container of alcohol. How is that going to be controlled from the standpoint of, you know, people passing off something to a minor?
Okay. We, when, if this gets approved, during all hours of operation in which we are serving alcohol, we will have security guards on staff, and they will be constantly roving around the entire arena, making sure that only people with wristbands, as people, anybody over age 21, has an alcoholic beverage.
So you do have a wristband control?
Yes.
Okay, that's okay.
Ma'am, Chair, one last question. Commissioner McLaughlin made me think about this. So the facility already has security because part of it is-
He wasn't finished.
Oh, oh my God, I'm sorry.
He wasn't done.
You've taken my thought, so go ahead.
All right, so, sorry about that.
My mind is all over the place anyways.
Well, hopefully I'll inspire you, because you've inspired me to ask, so with the security, that's required under the entertainment license or entertainment permit now, correct?
They actually don't need an entertainment permit because the CUP from three years ago was for indoor commercial recreation and entertainment.
They just have an after-hours.
Yeah.
Well, but there was also the CUP for the use itself.
Yeah, they got two CUPs.
Oh, especially that.
Because within this zone, that particular use required a conditional use permit. But so, and without having that CUP in front of me, did we have conditions in there in regards to security at that point?
There was any attendance over 500 required security?
Yeah, I believe so, actually. Yes, so anytime they had over 100 patrons, it was one per 100.
Okay.
So the occupancy that's approved for the site is over 800. That would be eight security guards at least.
Okay, all right. Back to you.
And I guess the question I had was, since you're open strictly at 4:00 in the afternoon, I mean, I'm assuming at this point in time you're open on a regular basis, more so than just special?
Yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, because originally, it appeared, the way you said it, Ali, was that it was certain events, certain times, not necessarily all the time. Now, I mean, I understand it's all the time.
Well, just to clarify, the use as a computer gaming venue is open seven days a week. But there are certain times of the week, like Fridays and Saturdays, where they have the option to reconfigure the interior, move all the computers out of the way, and make it like an arena. And then they have a mezzanine level where they also can set up seating. So it turns into a genuine arena, where there's a stage up front. That is during select times, but that is allowed on Fridays and Saturdays, the arena style.
Right, so it's a full-time venue with events throughout, events that are held on occasion, not necessarily every weekend, but on occasion. So with the proposal of the ABCD 41, what's the hours of operation, if that's going to be in play? If your hours start at 4:00 and go until 2:00, what's your hour at your restaurant?
So the proposal would allow the sale of alcoholic beverages from the onsite cafe to take place when the eSports arena is open. So when they are open, it's specified in the after-hours conditional use permit. But it was basically, they have to pursuant to the transit zoning code downtown, they have to close by midnight. But on Friday and Saturday nights, when there's an arena-style event, they're permitted to go until 2:00 in the morning. During any of those hour combinations, they would also be permitted to sell alcohol with the food from the cafe.
So are your hours, so what are your hours, are you anticipating your hours, cafe hours to be? Have you planned that out?
Yeah, right as we open at 4:00, the cafe would open up as well.
So 4:00 until midnight?
Right, or 4:00 until 2:00, depending.
Or 4:00, so depending if you have events, you're going to keep your kitchen, your cafe open?
Right.
The type of alcohol license that they're getting is predicated on the cafe.
Cafe and food sales.
So it will have to be opened any time they serve alcohol.
Okay, yeah, that's why I wanted to make sure, was like, want to know what the cafe hours were, because that would be basically the time they could sell alcohol as well.
And to your question, that's what I wanted to ensure. So some restaurants, they will start, stop serving food at a particular point and continue alcohol sales. Unless I missed it, I didn't see anything in here that would indicate that food sales had to be concurrent with alcohol sales. Is that in the resolution?
It's part of the on-sale retail-type license that they're getting. So what you're approving today is a CUP to allow alcoholic beverage sales for on-premise consumption, AKA a type 41 or 47. And essentially, either one of those license types requires that you have a functioning kitchen.
But it doesn't require that the, it doesn't require the service of food at all the times that you're serving alcohol? Because we have a couple of places within the city that do that, and I'm not opposed to them doing that, but I think, just hearing some of the concerns here, just wanting to think out loud, that's not in this resolution that's before us, as far as requiring them to allow for the availability to purchase food while they're able to purchase alcohol.
This resolution before you is similar to any other restaurant-style resolution you've seen, for Black Bear Diner, for Pizza Hut, whatnot. It's basically that this license type requires that they have a fully functional kitchen, and that if I went in there at 1:00 in the morning on Friday night, I need to have the option to order a personal pan pizza if I also want to get alcohol. Now, you can't, in California, it's not mandated that you sell alcohol with food. So some states say, if you want to order a beer, you have to order a pizza with it. Not in California, but I need to have the option to be able to order it. So if I go in at 1:00 a.m. and I say, hey, can I get a beer, and then I start getting a little bit hungry, and I say, hey, can you cook me up a pizza? If they say no, sorry, then that's against the state's codes and that's against the city's codes. So this resolution before you tonight is for any, like, any other typical on-premise ABC licensed CUP that you've seen in the past.
You good?
I'm good.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
So we're now going to open the public hearing. I didn't know, is, are you Tyler?
I'm Zach.
Oh, Zach. I didn't know if you wanted to speak during the public hearing. I know you've kind of already, we've already asked you questions, but the public hearing is open if you'd like to speak. Okay, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing then, and bring it back, and I'll entertain a motion and a-
I'm sure.
Commissioner Versera?
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving conditional use permit number 2017 dash 09 with one additional condition, and as redundant as it may sound, to require that food service be available during all times that alcohol sales are available onsite.
Second.
Second. Okay, got a motion? Commissioner Versera, the second for Commissioner McLaughlin. We have any other discussion on this?
I'm just happy to say this is the first in North America, so I'm glad that you guys are still going strong, and we're happy to get this for you.
I'm going to go back down, just one question. I mean, just to go back to what Phil is bringing into play here. I mean, if your, the restaurant closes the kitchen at 10:00, but the bar is still open till?
2:00.
2:00, okay? Now, is that because you have two separate entities? And the fact is, is that with the cafe, you have to have the cafe open in order to serve alcohol? So the alcohol will be served out of the cafe?
To Commissioner Versera's added condition, or to your question, the kitchen needs to be able to offer a meal any time someone wants to order alcohol. So past 10:00 p.m., let's say, if Joblo or an inspector from state ABC were to walk in and say, hey, can I get a beer? And then say, hey, can you, you know what, I'm hungry, can I throw in a pizza with that? And they say, no, we shut down our ovens, I don't have anything to offer you, that's against state law.
That happens a lot.
You can be your own sort of ad hoc ABC inspectors. So the condition is appreciated, I get that it's for clarification, but ultimately, with or without that condition, if an ABC inspector went into any restaurant, like Black Bear Diner on South Bristol, and tried to order food at like, you know, 11:59 p.m. and was able to get a beer, but they told him, no, I cannot give you food, then that would be against state law.
So the, it's, it's pred, it's based on the type of license. So the ones that we're considering are type 41 or type 47. There's a separate kind of license, and I forget the number for it, that allows you to have a bar. And that time, you don't have to have a kitchen open, but this type of license, which is a type 41, is for eating establishments. So to be an eating establishment, the eating establishment has to be open when you sell alcohol.
So if last call was 1:30, then you could- So, if last call was 1:30, then you can shut the kitchen down?
Yeah, exactly. If they said, you know, well, we're not selling any alcohol after 1:30, we just want people to sober up for thirty minutes, and then they have the right to say, you know, the kitchen's also closed.
Thank you. Okay, I've got a motion in a second with the added condition. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Congratulations. Thanks for being patient as well. Okay, so, this is going to take us into our end of business calendar, and we're going to move on to staff comments. Candida, did you have comments?
Yes, we do. First off, I would like to let you know that we had our third general plan committee meeting, and we're concluding the vision, visioning process for the big-picture item, and we'll be moving into separate topics and elements of the general plan. The second thing that I'd like to talk to you about is on the, as we recommended tonight on the condition for Mariscos, after we had said that you should have a report back on uses that we feel could be problematic or uses that we haven't approved before, we may require this as a condition. And we did for the type seventy-four. Now, that's the, a different kind of alcohol license, which allows you to serve it with, in a place that you manufacture it, so as a tasting room. And that required us to report after a year any issues that we had had, had with the facility. During that time period, there were only three calls for service at or near the location for the blinking owl. But the incidents didn't, were car alarms, two of them were car alarms, and one was a suspicious-looking person walking in the area. None were directly related to the use itself, so.
We didn't, I know, I think the reason we want to bring back was what Commissioner Ms. Sarah had said earlier, which was the parking situation, since they didn't have any parking. Have we, we didn't receive any complaints from the neighborhood? I think that was what they were concerned about.
We have not had any, we have not had any complaints from the neighborhood.
Perfect. That's great. That's good to hear.
And then finally, we are going to be having on the first meeting, your first meeting in May, we'll be looking at a number, it'll be work, it'll be work sessions, so we will not be conducting any public hearings or hearing any items. And so, because of that, we decided to move the code enforcement training issue to that meeting as well. So, it will be...
So, is that the May eighth meeting?
The first meeting in May. Pardon me?
May eighth, Benson saying yes.
May eighth, yes.
So, it's going to be just a working session?
It will be a working session, yes. We'll have a study session, so.
Will it be here or somewhere else?
Will it be here in the days? In chambers? Will it be here in council chambers?
Yes.
Okay. That's it. That concludes staff's report. Thank you. I'm going to move on to commissioner comments. Commissioner Nwane?
No comment, ma'am, chair.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
I have, I think there was a little, a lot of confusion, so to speak, in some respect with regards to Mariscos, the one, item three, with regards to the one that we denied, the application for the CUP for the ABC forty-seven. And the question I had is, and I think Phil brought it up in his comment, you know, what's to say that doesn't come back to next week or the following week? It has every right, so to speak, to come back. I mean, I think, or is there? Is there?
Yes.
There is.
It can't come back, right?
Yeah, they can't come back for a year. But, but you are not the final authority on this, so this will go to council for review and final action. At this point, last, last week, you made a recommendation to change the zoning ordinance so that you will be the final authority on it and will take final action. But at this point, you are not, council is, so it will be considered a council.
So, tonight meant nothing?
Potentially.
I mean, that's what you're saying. Tonight meant nothing.
No, it didn't. It meant that you made a...
We made a recommendation to deny it, so.
You took that action, and it will go, it will go to council as a consent item, and unless someone on the council is concerned about it and pulls it, it will be approved as, to reflect your action.
Okay, but I think there's a different point that's also being made. And the point is, since we approved the zoning situation as anything under two hundred fifty, uh, twenty-five hundred square feet, right?
No.
Yes?
Oh, at the, you made that recommendation at your last meeting. Now...
Right, so this is an eighteen-hundred, eighteen-hundred square feet facility, so it would fall underneath the twenty-five hundred square foot.
Right, but your action on that was not final either. That is a zone change and has to be acted on by the council.
But as soon as it does get acted on, then, in essence, the action that we took tonight...
Would be final.
Wouldn't happen. It would be, it wouldn't happen. It would have been gone to council, and that was it. We wouldn't have even seen it.
No, you're talking about the alcohol license or the, because of the size?
Yes.
No, it was two thousand, I believe that it would still come before you. At this time, we have not made a change to the alcohol uses.
We'd second all.
That was for site plan review, which would be, there were changes to the building or the structure, that kind of thing. There were no changes to this. This was a use, only a use.
I mean, I guess where I was coming from in the original point that I wanted to make was the fact that, you know, we could have put a, could we not have put a stipulation on there that says you come back in six months? You've given us all these actions that you're going to...
You could have...
To basically, you know, mandate your servers are going to do certain things to improve on the performance of your, of your facility. Therefore, based on that, we'd be willing to hear something, a report back in six months and then get the same feedback from the neighborhood with that. I mean, at this point in time, it's, I'm kind of, kind of getting to, it's going to go to council, council will, you know, if they approve it?
Well, they would have to schedule for a public hearing.
Right. If you were, if you were the final authority on this, which you, on certain items, you will be in the future on CUPs if it's adopted by council, you would have the ability to what we call deny without prejudice. So, the motion then that you would, because if you wanted to hear, be, have them be able to come back within the timeframe for it, in a shorter time period, say, within six months or four months, whatever you wanted to stipulate, you could deny without prejudice, which would mean they could come back within that timeframe.
Okay. Correct me if I'm wrong, but for example, regarding to condition use permit 2017-03, we denied it, the applicant have the right to appeal to the city council for a decision on it, right? Is that correct?
Well, in this case, they, the city, it will go to the city council. But, but when you are the final authority on items, which, after the amendment that you looked at last week is adopted, yes, they would have the right to appeal, file an appeal to the city council.
But also, it's not preventing them for, reapply for another CUP, this, the same thing, right?
No, there is a stipulation that, that you cannot apply for one within another year, and that's, that's just a state law. So, it prevents people from just keeping applying over and over and over.
So, just to be clear then, because I think what Commissioner McLaughlin asked was, they can't just come back tomorrow morning to the public counter and reapply?
No, they cannot.
Well, no, no, because earlier you had said, yeah, they could, but so, just to be clear, yeah, so just to be clear, they, to your point, Commissioner, when they're, they're not going to come back tomorrow, they still have to go to council, they still have to, you know, go through that process, but yeah, they're not coming back tomorrow morning or something.
Oh, perhaps you misunderstood. If you had, only if you denied it without prejudice, which is what you did, you could come back the next day if you did that. Yes. There's a method for doing it, you didn't do it.
So, it would be deny with prejudice?
You denied with prejudice, man.
No, I said, I'm just saying if we did.
Yeah, that's what you did.
Isn't it, isn't it harder to revoke someone's CUP than actually denying them initially and then, and then force them to wait that year and come back? I mean, if, if the, if the council was to agree with us, isn't it, isn't it easier for them to come back in a year than for us to try to revoke it in six months if they received it?
It, it depends. To make, to revoke a CUP, you have to make certain findings because it is a land use right. It goes, typically, when we bring a CUP back to you, we would, the first thing we would do would be to suggest modifications to the, unless it was incredibly egregious, we would suggest modifications that we believed would be able to eliminate the issues that they were having, and then, and stipulate a period during which the use would be monitored and then bring it back. So, it tends to be a process.
They kind of get more due process, they're more due process.
There's more due process involved with revocations, yes, so.
Commissioner Contrasio, did you have any comments? Commissioner Ms. Sarah? I don't have any, so we will adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you.